All this meeting. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Polly.
Here.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Blavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yeah. Uh, moving forward, uh, to the adoption of the agenda, uh, we will be modifying the agenda and placing closed session prior to the presentation. Um, so outside of that amendment to the agendas, are any other additions for, oh, actually we can add.
We can add because we all have.
Addition, subtraction, or fractions? Thing on, uh, and then, uh, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda?
We need to make a motion.
Oh, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
To adopt the amended agenda, is there support?
Support. Justice Norman.
Moved and supported for the discussion. Seeing that, uh, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Uh, agenda has been adopted, is there? This is the first opportunity for, and the first opportunity for public comment, public comment, uh, and the first go around is for anything that's on the agenda. Obviously, the presentation hasn't been conducted yet. So, uh, if there's any public comment in person or online, uh, please use the bottom task bar under the ellipsis, uh, to raise your hand so that we can identify you and hear your comment. Or if there's anybody in person with comment to the agenda as presented, uh, can stand to the podium and state your name. Saying none on either front, uh, I'd entertain a motion to go over the session.
I'll make a motion that the township board enter into closed session to consult with the township attorney regarding trial strategy in the water and sewer rate litigation, pending before Alpena County Circuit Court pursuant to MCL one five dot two six eight one E.
We have a motion on table, is there support?
Or.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion. Uh, roll call, please.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We're officially in open session at six oh, yeah. Officially back. Open session.
At what time?
At seven thirty. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the township attorney's settlement recommendation and authorize it to be presented to the city attorney.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion. Saying none, roll call, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. This brings us to the true purpose of this meeting, which is the, uh, fire department, uh, consultant report, uh, from Mr. Marinucci and Mr. Flynn, uh, gentlemen, uh, see if you'd like to take the podium.
Well, good evening, thank you for the opportunity to stop by here. Uh, we have just a brief presentation we'll give you, uh, and then open up for whatever your desires are, uh, from that particular point in time. Uh, we were asked to come and evaluate your department, we bring a different perspective. I mean, that we're not emotionally involved in your community, so we can hopefully look at it just from a factual perspective and make our observations, that's exactly what they are, our observations for a particular point in time. I think it's important to understand that, uh, there's over, uh, thirty-three thousand fire departments in the United States and each one has its own, uh, ways of doing things and, uh, our belief is that it's up to the communities to select the type of department they want, the risks that they have in their particular community and their willingness to pay to address those particular risks, so. Uh, in the end game, we give you some ideas and you then take the opportunity to decide what's the best for you and your community, uh, as far as that goes. Uh, you can have all kinds of fire departments, we know that. This country goes from New York City to middle of nowhere and everything in between, so. Uh, it's not appropriate for us to come in and say, here's what you should do or whatever, only to offer you some perspectives and some ideas, uh, with respect to what our observations were. Uh, we spent some time up here and, uh, talked to every, I think every member of the fire department, every member of the board and some of your residents. Uh, we gathered information, ironically, as much as you may think you're different, you all kind of had similar stories. Uh, so it wasn't, uh, way out of line, we didn't hear anything too different, uh, as far as what was going on and some of the challenges you face, and the challenges you face are not also that different from many, many departments. You have, uh, difficulties recruiting enough human beings to do this job. Uh, that's a trend, uh, not only here in the United States, but I was talking to somebody earlier today who was over in Europe and he said they assign a volunteer firefighter if you wanted, so it does expand to even outside of our borders, it's just a change in society. It's harder and harder to get more and more, uh, people to do that. So you have that issue of getting enough resource to do the job, and then, of course, it becomes the funding. You have a fire department, you gotta have people, and you gotta have equipment, you gotta have training, you gotta policies and procedures, and you gotta have leadership, and those are the elements that, uh, make up a fire department. And again, your willingness to pay and how far you're gonna go, uh, determines what's going to happen, so, uh, with that in mind, uh, turn it over to Greg to.
Uh, good evening, uh, Greg Flynn, and happy to be with you. Rich and I took a, uh, very close look, uh, after those, uh, individual interviews and interactions with some of the groups, uh, and, uh, evaluated the data that was provided to us, so documents, policies, procedures and all that, and we lay that over, uh, our understanding of, of local, regional, state, national, uh, conditions, and also, uh, paralleling that with what the national standards are and advisory groups that that kind of help guide best practices, uh, in the fire service. In your report that was provided to the board, there's basically three main sections, there's the overview, which you're very familiar with, the community, uh, that, uh, you're a part of, uh, the assessment and the recommendations. The focus that, uh, we wanna really be, you know, spend our time with you tonight is on the assessment and what that assessment led us to with the recommendations. It's important that when we walk through this, that we understand two terms that are important when you could, when it comes to developing a fire department and the amount of, uh, resources that are allocated to it, and those two terms are hazard and risk. So the hazard is the thing that can cause harm within your community, and the risk is the likelihood of that, that harm becoming a reality. And so, it is asked that you keep that in mind, because as Rich said, you know, it's up to you to, uh, determine your risk level uh, in there, the, uh, the hazards are present in all of our communities, there's fire, the threat of fire in all communities, but the risk of that fire can be elevated based on population density and industry and other factors, uh, that may be, uh, in the area. So, in the assessment, as I said, we, uh, took a look at, uh, approximately three years' worth of, uh, with worth of data, which, um, was your call volume, we looked at your current, uh, standard operating guidelines and policies and procedures, uh, training records, uh, staffing models, and how many staff that you have, career and, uh, within your paid-on-call, uh, ranks, and uh, understanding, again, in those conversations with how you're utilizing those staff and, uh, how they respond to different calls and your partnership with other, uh, municipalities in the area that play a role in your overall, uh, emergency response, uh, program. So, in doing that, that brought you to the section of, uh, recommendations, which really come down to three themes, if you will, and that is that there was a very clear, uh, trust issue, uh, that runs vertically through the organization. So from the newest member of the department, you know, all the way through, uh, to quite frankly, some of the other stakeholders that, uh, we had the opportunity to, to talk with. Now, that term trust is broad, and we, I think, provide a little more detail in the report, uh, as, as it relates to, uh, rebuilding that trust, and I'll, I'll touch on those recommendations here shortly. Uh, we also have, uh, immediate operational recommendations that we feel would improve efficiency, uh, in our professional opinion, and, uh, I'll touch on those, and then finally, the inter-local agreements partnering with other municipalities and, uh, um, stakeholders in the community, uh, around you that could help to reinforce, uh, the outcomes that you're hoping to achieve. Building trust, three things that we wanna touch on here is the need for a strategic plan, we evaluated a proposed strategic plan, uh, that the chief had, had provided, and, uh, feel that there's some valuable, uh, information in there and provides a, a valuable framework for, uh, continuing to develop that. It's important that the development of the strategic plan be all-inclusive of the stakeholders, uh, across the board, so that there's, it's shaped in a way that is achievable, so setting goals that are both service-driven, but also with the resources to achieve the outcomes that, uh, that you, uh, have shared in the vision for where the fire department will be. There has to be an approach, uh, for improving funding and resource allocation that would, would marry well to those that shared vision for where the fire department will operate and what staffing looks like and what those resources will look like and how that funding will come into it. You know, we spent a, a great deal of time in our, in our conversations about some of the millage initiatives and, uh, heard a great deal of feedback, uh, about, uh, how the outcome may have been, um, uh, with a, with a shared approach, how you may achieve a different, uh, outcome with, uh, the vote from the citizens. And then, uh, again, coming back to both of those, because without that funding, it, it's, uh, our opinion that it's difficult for the firefighters to feel a sense of trust when, uh, that, that funding model isn't there for them, and I think that that's sometimes an important, that is, not sometimes, that is an important role for our elected officials to understand their perspective as it relates to funding and the stability of their role within the community. So we really wanna underscore that as a way of building that trust with the team, um, and the FD side of things, when they see those, the allocation of those resources, uh, coming, uh, in that direction to achieve, uh, their goals. The inter-local agreement, uh, is broad, and, uh, while there was a great deal of time, uh, that we heard feedback about the, um, uh, agreement with the city of Alpena, we want you to know that our recommendation is broader than that, and that there may be opportunity with other communities that are struggling with some of the same challenges that Alpena Township is having, is to engage in, uh, conversation with them. And, uh, leveraging all opportunities and even training and bringing in training and shared training that would be, uh, helpful for all the stakeholders, uh, in the region, um, county of, uh, Alpena. And then, into the immediate operations where we provide you probably the most robust number of recommendations, and I think it's important to understand that what we recommend can also be, uh, kind of allocated however you want. So if we give you a percentage, you know, that's our recommendation, but if you think that percentage is too high, then you just dial it down, if you think it's too low, you dial it up. That's where Rich and I try to give you the professional opinion that you asked us for and just what we said, an opinion. Um, and that opinion doesn't come with just a few years of experience, it comes with a great deal of professional lived experience within the fire service across the great state of Michigan. Um, so, we believe that you should, uh, look at, uh, changing your staffing model, and, uh, Rich and I both share this very adamantly of, uh, two personnel and a piece of apparatus when responding to an emergency. Uh, we feel that, uh, even arriving on a scene, you're, uh, better prepared, uh, to address an incident with two, two staff members arriving together, and also, uh, with the ability to train and do other things, uh, during, uh, any, uh, uh, opportunity time within the engine house in between calls. Uh, there's some recommendations in there related to participation, uh, you know, training, response standards and things like that with, uh, uh, with your response model and with the city of Alpena responding on, uh, your, your medical emergencies for transport. Um, there is a great deal of literature out there about emergency response and responding past emergency vehicles, uh, that are within your response area, meaning passing another fire station with an emergency response to a call that there's also other emergency responders going through. So we would strongly, uh, have you, uh, evaluate your emergency response, uh, deployment, uh, to those types of incidents. Uh, look at tracking, uh, the performance, uh, related to training and ensuring that uh, all members of the department are attending a number of certain percentage of the trainings that you have out there, we know that we can have, um, low-risk, uh, excuse me, high-risk, low-frequency incidents in the fire service, and it's the training that prepares us for those low-frequency, high-risk situations. So we wanna make sure that staff are well-prepared when those come up. Uh, we also touch on promotional, uh, opportunities in there, there was a lot of discussion about unfilled positions, but, um, regardless of the position filled or unfilled, that there should be a clear path for how a member of the department achieves the promotion, and clearly what the board or, uh, which group is gonna set what those parameters will be. Um, we have a recommendation in there that, uh, to engage your paid-on-call staff, to provide them an opportunity to, uh, staff the station and compensate them for that time, so that they are around your career firefighters and have the opportunity to, to catch up or, or train more, uh, hands-on with them, so that they're well-prepared and to integrate, uh, when a call for service comes in and they're responding from, uh, wherever they may be in the township. Oh, your community risk reduction is a, a main, um, uh, role of the fire department in any community, and so, uh, there's a recommendation in there to use your on-duty staff, uh, to start an inspection program and get inside your, uh, commercial buildings and ensure that, uh, we're reducing the risk of fire and hazards, uh, within your community, so, uh, having some kind of inspection program, uh, initiated, and then, uh, reviewing your hiring policy, there was a great deal of dialogue about the time to, uh, hire i- individuals, and while, uh, we respect, uh, the process of each community that we have the opportunity to engage with, um, there, there could be some areas for improvement to, um, get those that may be excited about joining the Alpena Township Fire Department, uh, to get them engaged, uh, at a little bit faster pace, while ensuring that those that are engaged remain able and fit for, uh, engaging in the high-risk, uh, job that is firefighting and emergency response. Uh, and, uh, also making sure that you're getting feedback, that can be something immediately that the board is well-informed as to getting, uh, reports that are very clear as to the performance of your fire department, what they're doing, where things are going, who's doing what, that that kind of, uh, feedback is very valuable to you, so that you feel you're an active participant uh, in the fire department, uh, as the governing body, and, uh, that is, uh, a brief overview of what we've prepared, prepared for you, and, and I know that Rich and I are, are well, uh, are looking forward to taking any questions you may have about anything specifically in, in report.
Trustees? I've got too many to start, why don't you start with someone? Oh, start.
Start.
Alright. Um. How, how, what is the minimum full-time staff?
What do you wanna do? So it always comes back, uh, um, you're very limited in what you have, you're very limited in what you can do at this particular one time, obviously, if you're sending one person, there's only so many things that one person can do, seeing most emergencies, right, that's as far as I go. Essentially what you're doing, you're stopping a clock, usually for most, uh, medicals, uh, you're gonna need a couple of people there, right? So you can start a few things, obviously, but the reality of it is, now you're starting in the structure of others. You know.
For people?
Yeah, for the, just jump start, it's supposed to have two in, two, two outside before you can go inside the building.
Right.
So that's just about there mainly. So again, how do you get that, depends on your organization, what time of day, how many on-call staff are gonna respond, how long it's gonna take to get in there.
One of the things you recommended that, that I never thought of, makes sense though to me, is to put the two staff we have on full-time together in the same station. Did you have an opinion which station?
Well, your visitor's station would be your, your choice, because regardless, the way you're set right now for all your calls, one of the stations gotta drive through.
No.
Right, so if the medical.
They go past the.
The medical is already getting dispatched, right? Cause they're doing the transport. Um, you know, besides having a couple of people to get started on a call, but also, I always think back at the station, you got one guy, what if something happens? Who's there to check on him and make sure everything's okay? Can you do any training with one person during the day? Right, if at least you got a couple of people, you, there's a chance you probably practice a few things, feel a little better at your skills, et cetera, et cetera, there's, there's certain advantages, you know? Uh, obviously, with anything you do, there's a trade-off, and again, how you're looking at it, but, uh, you know, and I think driving a five-hundred-thousand-dollar vehicle with lights and sirens going, trying to listen to the radio traffic and dispatchers, maybe looking at for addresses and trying to get through intersections, you know, without an extra set eyes. Again, that's, that increases your risk, when you're driving by yourself, and it's not like you're, you know, driving in the road with traffic, and when you're busting through intersections, you're a lot of other things going on other than just manipulating.
But would those two people only take one unit to a fight?
Yeah, there's no point taking two if you can't utilize, so, and hopefully your on-call staff maybe could, uh, help participate in, in trying to engage, that's, that's the other half of it, is you gotta get your on-call staff more engaged and see how we can supplement your career staff on a more consistent basis.
Well, and I, and I like asking them to be full-time, twenty-four hours a month, I think.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be one full shift, I mean, it can be, you can break it up however you want, it's just a way to start getting additional people, and then it also gives them additional experience, because now they're gonna be on the first ride in the vehicle, uh, can also help with the training, et cetera, et cetera, right, now, if you got a couple more people that are, you know, you're, you're, you're a few more things you can do in the training arena.
Bottom line though is, is how much of the recommendations you've made, should that be implemented by a township board as opposed to the leadership of the department? That's more of a general question.
The, the, many of the concepts that we're talking about, those three themes are interwoven, so if the township board was to direct fire department leadership to, to staff each of the station, let's just say with two people, you know, there, the resources have to follow to do that. And so, that seems to be, uh, the thread that kind of ties all of this together is the need to ensure, you know, we heard it from ev- just about every one of your firefighters, there's commitment and dedication in each and every one of them, and there's no doubt, and we heard that from board members, how proud they were about the fire department. Uh, what's interesting is how each of those stakeholder groups think how the other group thinks about that, and that's what brought us back to the trust component. So, um, building that model in and setting that, I think, can feel uncomfortable, the richest point where you're saying, well, we're only staffing one station, and immediately the responses were somehow doing a disservice to another group in the community, because they don't have a staffed station. Well, your community needs to understand that in order to provide that service, that you, the board, need resources to staff that. Continuing to staff it in a way that is not, uh, optimal is simply kicking the can down the road. So, I think it's incumbent, and that's where I think folks like us coming in and maybe helping to frame this discussion, if that is what the community wants, if they share that value and that vision for Alpena Township Fire Department, then the funding through the millage needs to pass, so that you're able to support the team in the way that they're saying is optimal. So you're going to respond, you're going to respond. But what's optimal is to have the appropriate funding to put people in both of those stations at an adequate, uh, staffing level.
Just to clarify, that optimal doesn't mean like that makes you an idea apart if I can have two people stationed, okay? That's doing what you have to do and what you, what you resource and lobby to do, you know, so.
Well, we're a growing community, uh, where the city, not necessarily as much, so. We're growing at least commercial, and, and I liked your idea about commercial inspections. But how do we do that with two people only? I'm doing, do they both go with the rig?
But, yeah. Yeah. None of them, various departments do that, they send them out, and then they're available, call comes in, and you're able to break off the inspection.
My bottom line question, I think, is how do we get there, I mean, you've talked about funding and, and, oh, that's on us. On us with the citizens, really on the citizens.
Well, and that, and part of that is really having that concrete plan, so it's crystal clear what you're gonna do. So then we go back to the citizens, say, we'd like some resources, if you give us mine, here's what we're going to be able to do with that, they're gonna be very specific in that.
Is there enough here to give us a concrete plan that people like us that don't know anything about firefighting and?
I think so, I think there's enough to, to understand, then, we're just going all the way through.
That's, that's all I have right now. Trustee Kroll?
Um, so I thought the report, when you get down to it, um, it identified a lot of, uh, I think some of the things that we were thinking about, um, some of the issues that we have, uh, like the lack of funding, um, lack of staff, I mean, we've talked about some of these issues, and, and like you said, they're all kind of woven together. Um, you know, the one thing that struck me was, uh, the training records, um, there was a section about three different listings of individual trainings when you were compiling those. Um, I kinda find that, found that alarming, I guess, um. You know, I understand having a strategic plan, but when you don't have the resources to implement any of that, I, I think that's kinda somewhere where we're suffering as well, so I thought the report was very accurate. Um, and I, I think all the recommendations make a lot of sense, especially for the immediate term. Um, and I think we really need to work with, uh, forming agreements or partnerships with, with other agencies, I just, I think, regret that point.
Just to address the one issue that you mentioned, those are the plan, I mean, for that to be effective, it has to, you have to bring the stakeholders, it's, it's gotta be combined effort, because everybody's gonna give their perspective. Right, if you ask me, I'm gonna just say, write me a blank check, and I'm gonna give you whatever you want, right, and, and I draft a plan. You, you gotta get everybody, cause you gotta be balanced, I think, no matter what you do, and that's the same, any, any community you go to.
And just, uh, just maybe follow a little bit up on that, you, you know, I think we, um, s- sell fire departments short when we focus strictly on responding to emergencies. There's a huge component in community risk reduction that I think Alpena Township could capitalize on, where you're engaging with your community prior to the incident and utilizing that as part of your outreach, um. I'm just programmed to stop talking, but this happens, I'm programmed. Um, so, is understanding that that role of community risk reduction, which is outside of how you typically may be thinking about your approach to how you deploy resources within your community. And so if you're trying to say for the last fifty years, this is how we've done it, and you're going to continue to try to do it that way, you may find this more difficult. You may need to push harder out of what you traditionally think of with Alpena Township Fire Department, and engage the community in a new way to show value for those dollars that they're entrusting you.
Look. One of the things that I, I, I share, uh, trustee Kroll's comments that the, that the, uh, report is thorough, accurate, it, it tells me several of the things that, that I think we already knew, uh, but that uh, just didn't have the plan that you were talking about. But one of the things that I tried to overlay is we, specifically about funding, is I, I look back, many years ago, uh, the city and the township, um, jointly, uh, hired Raymond Robson to do a report. Although I didn't concentrate on really any other, any parts of the report other than the financial side of it. Uh, one of the things that they had pointed out accurately, I might add, is that the population base of both the city and the township, uh, were declining and would continue to decline, and so I I, I kinda took that as a bit of a challenge, and I said, why, it doesn't seem like that's what's happening. Well, in fact, that's exactly what is happening, uh, I, I found that the city of Alpena's population from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty-two has actually gone down by about six hundred people, and the township over that roughly same period of time had gone down about a thousand people. What I also found interesting was that the median age, age, now I looked at this from a co- countywide standpoint, uh, uh, and I'm, I'm assuming that, uh, the Raymond Robson did the same thing. Uh, was thirty-five-point-five percent in two thousand and two, uh, forward, fast forward twenty-two years, and the, uh, average, the median age now is forty-seven-point-six percent. But even scarier was that the average age, uh, But even scarier was that the average age uh, over sixty-five, the percentage was twelve point three then and is now twenty-four point, uh, twenty-four percent today. So it compounds the problem, I feel, of funding because I think historically uh, an older generation is less likely to vote yes on something because of financial constraints that they may have. And so it leads me to a, a, a conclusion, I guess, that although we need we, we certainly need to have fire protection and emergency services protection, uh, we probably like many municipalities throughout the country have to really seriously look at, how can we uh, get the best bang for the buck? What, how can we stretch our dollar? And one of the things that you talked about in here uh, was not only cooperative action type agreements, but you also talked about uh, entering into agreements with um, ad- adjoining municipalities. And, and this board knows how I feel about one of those municipalities adjoining. Uh, and, but it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm not opposed to looking at cre- the creation and in fact was one of the recommendations or thoughts of the ad hoc committee that was put together a long time ago. Uh, to look at potentially creating a fire authority that would encompass all of the township municipalities uh, in the county. And I'm wondering in your experience, how effective that has been? So let me preface it by saying that with the exception of, and, and only townships, Alpena Township is the only township that has both paid and paid on call. Whereas all the other municipalities are much smaller and runs through a volunteer system. And so I'm wondering from a, from a standpoint of marketing or, or, or creating uh, uh, the environment which would bring these municipalities to the table, at least to discuss it, what your experience has been uh, in your years of doing this?
Well, this depends a great deal about what part of the country you're talking about. There's many parts of the country have been able to do exactly what you said, create this fire authorities because of the challenges that they face. Again, there's different methodologies to go through those. You gotta get people to the table first to talk about it. From what you just described, it seems like your entire county is under the same challenge, right? An aging county, losing population, you're, you're not the only two places losing, right? You know, that's compounds a lot of different things. One is the population ages, you get more medical problems. As the population ages, you're less likely to volunteer, right? Because you have less of a uh, pools as well, et cetera. So there's a lot of different things that come into play. But if you could get everybody at least to a meeting or two initially and say, you're all gonna be faced with the same challenges. If you're not facing it today, it's, it's, it's coming down in terms of practice right now. And we better jointly try to figure out another solution to address this because we have a certain number of bodies in this county that are willing to part, be part of a fire department, whether it's career or volunteer, right? You know, there's a finite number of people that are gonna do this. And if you can start sharing some of those resources, then you get a better chance of providing better quality across the whole county with respect to that. Then you got people coming in here and kind of check their egos at the door, right? And understand that we, we can leave your, the name of your community on the side of the fire truck if you want, so people think they're getting it from Alpena Township or whatever other township you wanna talk about. The reality of it is you're gonna bundle everything together and take advantage of a, a larger organization to share those resources. I know. That's something I think is gonna be the reality of a lot of different parts. They're gonna have to look at it. Or you're just gonna end up being unable to address the risks that you have. You're not gonna be able to send the resources to take care of the problem. If uh, you can't get your fire while it's small, with enough resources, it's gonna burn down. It's just a fact. You can't stop the physics of that. And so you don't get enough human beings there to deploy the lines and do all the other functions you have to do. Um, your outcomes are gonna be predictable and they're not even good. So you need, everybody needs that same thing. The physics are the same regardless of where you're at.
Have the two of you had experience with that? With, with trying to coordinate or, 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 or mediate a, 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 a joint meeting where, where, okay, so the idea of, of having you know, each municipality's name on the truck is, that, that doesn't bother me a bit. Uh, the idea the, the consolidated resources to me seems like a good thing. So I wonder, when we hire somebody uh, for the fire department, are they required to be a citizen of the township of Alpena? Okay. Is there a twenty-two mile?
Nope, we have no.
Okay, okay.
We have several minutes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And so, but I would seem to me that that would also increase the opportunity to create career fire people, people because maybe that's a, maybe that's a goal of theirs if they're in an outlying township or something. So um, I just feel as though somewhere along the line, if we can't, if we can't overcome population and bring down average ages, this is only gonna get worse.
And you're not alone.
Yeah. And so I don't know exactly how to, how to remedy that. Uh, and that's been, I think, our, our overall biggest struggle. But when you really begin to just look at the numbers and they just really start speaking for themselves, uh, that exacerbates the issue. And so moving forward with, with uh, I, I totally agree with you that having a, a solid plan and a, and a solid mission that is agreed to by all to move forward so that the, so that the general populace understands that we have a common theme and we're, we're trying to achieve a common objective. Uh, uh, dramatically increases the opportunity to get a village passed.
I, I think we would just like to add in there that that means that there will be compromise in the conversations. Everybody is not going to achieve exactly what they would like to see in the Alpena Township Fire Department. There has to be flexibility in understanding budget constraints, staffing, training, opportunity to go outside of the township for training. All of those things have to be balanced. And so that means all parties have to be flexible in uh, in that way forward.
Totally agree.
Trusty Ryan?
Well, and, and Steve brought up a good point, one or two good points. One of the things I wanted to ask you is, is our equipment adequate? Would be evaluated, our equipment at all?
Basically, no, we see yes. Skidding out the door, I won't, won't pay.
The, the, as far as the village within our township is concerned, a lot of people, those retirees, you were talking about, I'm not one of them, I'm not one of them that has two homes anyway, let me put it that way. But a lot of them have their primary residence here. Uh, so they don't have a school tax on that residence, but they also probably have a secondary residence or at Arizona condos. So they're they're on a, say, a retirement fixed income of sorts or whatever their resources are, but they're not excited about paying. Those people that are permanent residents here are not excited about paying our taxes. And they're not here six months.
Never found anybody that wanted to.
And they're not here for it six months. So, so they're, they're gone and they're saying, why should I pay? That's, that's, I don't know what Steve was.
And I think we would say that's where that answer has to be firm, that the value that the Alpena Township Fire Department brings, whether you're here or in Arizona, there is value to having your career firefighters, a well-trained group of your paid-on-call staff because they're protecting your home when you're not here. They're adding community risk reduction. They're adding inspections into your commercial buildings. That's the value. And that's that messaging that has to be collectively shared by all stakeholders that they understand that value. Um, and that's what you bring to the community and that's what you're, that's the value for everything. When you give us and trust us with, that's the return that you get on that dollar.
The um, you know, and I asked you, how many firefighters we, we know that six aren't. We know that, we not, we know that eleven to twelve or thirteen responding paid-on-call folks. Probably not enough. But that, is that what you're recommending though? A hybrid type operation like we're doing right now?
I don't think you can afford anything else. Bottom line, you start, firefighting's labor intensive. You get a building burning, I mean, you, you need a bunch of hands to do all the work. Right goes and it's physical work, you know, you do it every day. No, but when you do it, you gotta have enough people to make a difference.
Well, and part of our issue, it is with, with the exception of stable group of full-time folks that we have. A lot of our younger recruits don't stay long, right? So we need enough money also to pay people a better wage. Do we not?
You talking your career or on-call?
Career.
I think you gotta be competitive with, you know, whatever, wherever they're going, I mean, to a certain extent. I mean, obviously you're never going to completely. That's a big, big issue down in Metro Detroit area right now. It's like people jumping from, you know, department to department, right? They're like, hey, who's got the better pension? Who's got the better healthcare? Who's got the better pay? Who's got the better schedule, right? And they're just, guys are moving on there. It's a tough, competitive market now.
I didn't count how many times, but in your report, you indicate you, you quoted something about the Alpena Fire Department, which I assume you're talking about the city fire department. And then you went on another paragraph, talked about the Alpena Township. So am I right in that or is that a type?
It could be a type. Well, if you have the reference, yeah, we didn't put city on the end of something, but um, I, I wanna let you know, like, I remember interviewing one of the um, firefighters who loves being in Alpena Township, like, they want to live here. They, they don't wanna move down to southeast Michigan. You have something special here that keeps people local. And so it's a matter of engaging them and having them feel part of something that has a clear vision, that they feel that they're contributing to the community and so that, you know, that's part of that recommendation of building that trust and, and there's probably some other words you could put in there that, that, that support that, that uh, that objective. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too quick to dismiss what your community has to offer for those that, that choose to stay. Uh, so it's.
I'm, I'm one of those in the game.
But I, I guess specifically referring to some of those younger folks maybe to, to be more laser focused on, on the count.
I just have a few things that, a little bit different than everybody's, but I really appreciated the report. I do think there's things in your recommendations that we do, but I think you've added things to it to give them more gump or whatever, um, just for instance, like transparency. I mean, oh, I feel like our whole board is very transparent that if somebody wants to ask us something, I mean, we're all come and ask us. If you wanna see paperwork, you wanna see numbers, we'll, you know, we'll show you numbers to back, back up things if somebody has questions about something. So I just, I guess I just feel that um, and even reports that, you know, we could get from the chief, you know, you kind of expanded on that as far as, you know, inspection outcomes, you know, training updates, um, department activities, things like that, that I think those are things in addition to what we get that I would like to see. So, you know, we do get some of it, it just adds to it, adds another layer. And communication, I think, is the biggest problem of everything in here because there isn't a lot of communication and there's a lot of talking and things like that, but come and ask, or it's on both sides. And if things aren't being communicated properly, then there comes in the trust issues. I mean, I feel that they go hand in hand. And I just feel like, I don't know why, you know, if any of you guys ever wanna talk to me, I'm here and back, back and forth. But I don't like, it's almost like the board, the board. Well, yes, we're a board, but we're also individuals that sit on this board. So to blame the board, blame the board, it's, we are individuals. So, um, and I don't want it to be a blame game or anything, but I just feel like if we could all talk or if anybody has anything to talk about, it just seems like you work, you hi, hi, whatever, and that's it. But to really get down to the bones of something or there has to be better communication. And um, and if we can do something better for that, I mean, um, even the training, I mean, all of the expanded things you had in here on training, there's a lot of training or certain sta- standards you have to have to get hired to continually meet, you know, get certifications and things like that. Um, there's a wealth of great ideas in here and um, and I know, you know, everyone wants to feel appreciated, you know, anybody that does a good job, you know, I don't feel like I get a lot of pats on the back, you know what I mean, from residents when they're coming in to pay a bill, but
The treasurer.
But I mean, it's, it's
Happy to pay you.
But it's what we do. And I mean, and, you know, I enjoy my job and I feel like I've done my best and get better over and over, over as time goes on, because we all learn to change this or change that, but um, you know, our fire department is appreciated and it would just be nice once in a while to hear, hey, thanks a lot for voting to get that new piece of equipment or thanks a lot for this or that or whatever, just because it goes all around both ways.
You, you talked about, you had some contact with citizens in your report. I don't know how many and how you, if you felt it wasn't adequate sample, but I'd be interested to know what you got back from them in terms of supporting our party.
Well, statistically, we did get adequate samples, so I'm not sure, not enough to representative across the board, but I think the themes were kind of common was they, they pay a lot of taxes and it seems like there's a lot of different taxes being offered besides just county taxes, county taxes and then so there's that, sort of that feeling of, there's one too many kind of thing. So there's that concern and then kind of that, what are you gonna do with it specifically? Not just give us some money and trust us to spend it. They would love to know more specifics of what your plan on doing with it. And then I think the, looking at partnerships, as we suggest, you know, the inter-local agreements or you think that that might be feasible from their perspective, they don't.
Something like what Steve talked about.
Correct. Yeah, they don't care about the fire truck says, they just want somebody to show up with enough resources to take care of the problem. And then in the end game, that's the bottom line. When we dial nine-one-one, they'll, you know, so they want somebody there to fix the problem. So again, that's what they want. And, you know, again, the, the taxes, the tough piece, that's the way that, what are you willing to pay? And if you're getting, this, this organization's trying to raise your taxes here and this government, any, wants more tax and this one, school systems and whatever. Some point in time, again, you're gonna fix it and it's like, whoa, man, I'm running out. Someone's gotta give at some point in time. So that's a challenge, I think, that you really can't find that balance.
What kind of expertise do we need to develop a strategic plan and, and the SOGs and yes, whatever that you talked about. And I mean, I don't, I don't feel capable of that. I don't think I know it. I, I've been, it's been pointed out to me. I don't know enough about fire departments to, to uh, to do any of that. You know, all I know is we have to protect our citizens with the money they give.
I think it's facilitated, you can just use the appropriate facilitator to come in and get the interested parties that they're involved in and say, okay, what do you wanna do? And they need people that don't understand it because you're gonna ask the right question. Why do we need to spend money on this or why is it important to do that? Because you need to ask those questions. You gotta, you gotta get everybody out of the table. It's like, okay, and then at the end game, not to get making an informed decision because, you know, here's what's, the benefit's gonna be and here's what the cost is to get that particular benefit. Is it worth it? And you decide that collectively as, as a community, um, you know, as, as you, you know, if I were ever in the middle of the U P, my closest fire station might be, you know, fifty miles away. I take that risk, right? And I know it when I go up there, right? And by now, nine-one-one in certain parts of this country.
You're not get, nobody's gonna get there.
Right, because it's, but I chose to do that, right? So your communities chose to live here and they get to now say, here's the level of risk that we should take based upon what we're willing to pay and the type of things that we're likely to need to service for. So again, that's where y'all decided, I, you know, it's kind of trying to do the flavor for the community of where's that limit sort of thing. Everybody's a little different in how we do that. And you'll have certain percentage of community, they, they would vote no on any village, you know, if you shed, if you give me fifty dollars in taxes, I'll give you a hundred dollars back. They still vote no, because they're not, right? It's just the way is they're just automatically gonna do this and there's something that's gonna be supported. So one in the middle, you gotta convince to say, it's worth it. It's gonna increase your, the value of living here, the quality of life by adding certain services. You know, and I have, and the more you understand about what you're delivering. You know, and I had, and the more you understand about what you're delivering back to the community, I think it's easier to have that conversation. I think if you get to the point of you wanna look at a planning process, you do have to engage some of your citizens, say, what do you want? And get the people that want everything, the people that don't want anything, want an arm or muscle for your son.
So basically, the plan is the first step.
For, well, I think that's a longer term. I think you got some issues you probably address, you know, trying to streamline and get things moving. But you gotta get people talking, imagine communication. Never done a job where there's anything somewhere that I couldn't have said, there's gonna be a communication problem. What it never, right? You can improve communication, don't care where it is. It's just human nature. It happens. If you got issues going on, the more you can talk about things and get everything out. That's my belief is you say, you have nothing to hide, here it is, here's what's gonna happen. If you do this, this is the results. If you do that, here's the result and know what you wanna do and make that decision. And I mean, I argue, you know, because that's what I do, you know, is, you know, vouch or fight for what I think is what we should do and then they and we have to be united in our approach, right? Because you know, divided house doesn't work too well.
Just wanna follow up on your question, though, specifically when we get asked the question of how many firefighters do we need? That is a loaded question. We just want you to know, we're not avoiding it. But if you can't, if we give you a number and you can't afford them, you're not going to get them. So it it's it's really not as uh helpful to the conversation, because now people are disappointed because there's they, they will say we're understaffed, because you said this number and we're down here. Well, you need to look at your ability to pay and you wanna be able to, and you're saying in the same breath that you wanna pay people adequately. You know, whatever that number is. So those fundamental discussions have to take place and start where you stand and start making those incremental improvements. You know, you're gonna, uh that plan that we're talking about is going to take time. And and maybe it's an incremental growth for those dollars to come in to grow the Alpena Township Fire Department. So it's not like this is going to happen overnight. And I think that's just an important part of the conversation is to focus maybe more so on this this shared vision for where we want to be. And now let's start chunking that to get there. We we're not gonna arrive within the next three to four years, let's say. It might be seven, eight or nine that you get there and that's okay. In my opinion, that's that's government and it takes time.
No.
I think this report was very good and it's nothing that most of us didn't already know. And I think both sides could say that. My concern is that you guys will walk out this door and we will be just where we were before the report, not knowing where to go, how to do it. I feel like we need facilitators. And I'm just wondering, are you guys willing to stay on and help us work through some of these issues and work on our relationship with the fire department? Or after tonight, is it? Guys are on your own. Good luck with.
Good luck.
Yeah.
We won't discuss anything. That's what we do. I mean,
Okay.
You know, I think we'd have to see exactly what you're looking for in the end game and the commitments and so forth and you know, that's what we do. And that's what we're here for. I mean, we don't like to be ourselves, or the only reason we're doing this is we, I don't need another job. I gotta work. All work that I need right now. But if we can help you, that's what we're here for. Or if we can't do it, we can, we have some folks that we work with that certainly could make recommendations, you know, kind of thing. If that's where you like to to move in that direction. Yeah, you guys gotta get closer to the same page.
Right.
You guys are
And I think Laura hit it very well, saying communication, because it seems to me every time I have a conversation with the fire department, they have been given misinformation that I'm like, whoa, where did this come from? This is not what the board is doing. And so I think communication is a huge issue for us.
But I would say, you know, if we do end up walking out the door and aren't re-engaged, I would wanna leave you with this. And I'm saying because you choose to engage with someone else. Um what I, what I would leave you with as an as an important takeaway is look forward. Look forward where you want to go and and let go of these things that keep pulling the conversation back into an emotional response that is getting people frustrated and not moving forward. So I I would encourage you to do that if whoever you're working with, if the conversation needs to move towards your shared vision, not reliving the past, because I think all of you agree that some of the things in the past, I think that that shared by everyone that you can do better and you want to do better. Every firefighter, we said, you know, they wanna go on the calls, they wanna help the community. Um and then there was a but, and we want to eliminate that part of it. So look forward.
Yeah, I I'm I've always said that we need a plan and I'm just thinking your your report was, uh, I thought was very good and Mike, um, Shell had mentioned that I think it's most information, something we knew or maybe we didn't wanna know, but I think we need something and maybe you can direct us or maybe you can recommend somebody that can. Maybe we have to go two steps backwards to fill in some small holes and start moving forward. Maybe we can't have what we have today with the budget or the money that will allow, but it'll allow us to work on growing what we need to improve upon, working with other municipalities, maybe working with the city. But those things all take time, but we have to live within this board is gets X amount of dollars that we have to uh spend accordingly that citizens told us what we gotta do. So we need to take what we have and make it to the best of its ability with the funds that's available today. And then we can start doing, I think this is a great uh idea of calling down the commercial businesses, um getting familiar with them. Automatically, you're gonna start building some things, but that's not gonna happen overnight. All these things take time. I think we gotta go maybe backwards before we can go forward. But we need help in doing that. And I don't know if that's you folks or somebody else, but somebody needs to guide us. This is what you got. This is what you can do. This is what you can't do. I don't think any of us on the board here can do that. We've talked about it and I'm sure there's somebody in the fire department can help with those, some of those uh issues and questions that need to be done, but I still like the idea of a plan. Maybe it's to start right here. Maybe we're back to our infancy in moving forward. And not only that, I think the public will also see that we're doing a great job. You know, we're getting the mill and a half now. We should be like, we should pick up two minutes or two and a half, whatever is required, because they're seeing a need in the community and it's being fulfilled.
I think you're spot on and and you have some expertise, obviously, uh both the board and the fire department. Issue is until you you can let go of the past and say, all right, how do we jointly go after this thing? Because you, you know what you've been given financially, right? You know, your tax rates and all much of our board spend and some of the specifics, you've got some experts in the fire department, you have people on there compromising, so what's the best approach to make a game today? Because it all comes together. The better you do, you're gonna gain more support in the community too. So as you do what you say you're gonna do and as you demonstrate the capabilities and you have a definite vision of where you're gonna go, that gains the support. When you get out in the community and you're dealing with the businesses and they see your kind of sincere interest, then again, starts generating support for what you're trying to accomplish. And so it all kind of feeds together, but you gotta start kind of playing nice to get on the sandbox and and say, oh, but at this point, how do we get a little bit better?
Is this something you can help us with?
Well, we may be able to, yeah. I think we'd have to get specific and talk about exactly what you're looking for in the end game. And we gotta have some, uh, you know, discussions about, okay, what's people willing to do and where do we go? You know, can't be every time we throw an idea, you know, then we'll work, then we'll work, then we'll work. It's gotta be less of these evaluators than that. So you gotta have the open mind coming in, everybody. And say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna throw some things out. There's some may may be appropriate for Alpine Township, some may not. But if you don't throw things out there, how do you know? How do you know what's possible?
That's something for our board to discuss, I think, further down the road.
Yes. One final question, at least for me. There have got to be other municipalities similar to Alpena Township that have had similar issues and that have created a a new wheel. So instead of us reinventing that wheel, what municipalities that you know of or that have worked with?
Wish I had some magic dust for you right now.
I I need the magic dust right now. So so I'm not, I'm not asking you to do that, but what I am asking for is if there are municipalities out there that are similar in nature that we could call upon and find out what worked, what didn't work, what what templates they have, what what system they have in place that that we could glean information from or even maybe just flat plagiarize uh then then better for us.
But and I, you know, things that come to mind, there are communities that maybe we could talk about offline that, you know, just to give some ideas, but you have some uniqueness about your township, your geography. Um, you know, Rich and I were talking on the way up how we were under the belief that every township was thirty-six square miles until we came to Alpena Township. Clearly, you know, that was uh one of our our big takeaways. So you have a lot of geography to cover with your with your two stations and with one person at each of those. So
Your comment about the ring road, which we don't have, um, that might not be on cards.
What's a ring road?
Just a, you know, like a a service road that you could get from one side of town to the other side of town without going through the entire population.
Maybe they'll come down with this.
Yeah, so anyway, I just.
Well, there is a solution for you. It it's understanding that that solution is shared and that it may not line up with everyone's expectations, but it is within your means. And getting people to that point is where, um, you know, having somebody that has an outside perspective that can keep the discussion on point and not going all over the place and that that may be helpful uh for you. And then to align that with a deeper review of policies or updating certain things and 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 maybe borrowing great ideas from other communities. Um, that those are
Tomato, tomato.
Yeah, those are all things that I I think that a facilitator could assist you with. Yes.
We call that R and D.
Yeah.
No, but it, your question is valid, but in the real world, it's really hard to match up exactly department to department, because you start talking about cultural issues and historical issues and things that got you to this point. Right? So your circumstances today are not the same as what you're gonna find where else. Sure, they've got their own challenges and so there are certain pieces you can start plucking from different departments and say, okay, this seemed to have worked there and maybe, you know, similar, but to take an entire system and do it, because you have to go, you have to really recreate a culture.
Yeah, no, I I and I didn't.
Overnight is really, really hard to do.
I didn't mean necessarily at street level. I meant maybe at ten thousand feet to um have a bigger umbrella look at it.
Yep. And you have to consider, as Rick had mentioned, the uniqueness of what you have here too. It applies to them. And when you jumped into the fray and what you have started right now, so I think one question is what can you do to best utilize your current resources, but to get things heading in the right direction? And then say, okay, where do we wanna be in downstream somewhere? What's the vision?
Are there any more questions by the board? This will be an atypical uh secondary public comment, uh but we have three members of the public. If any of the three members of a citizen may have questions of either Mr. Marinucci, uh now will be the time following uh the three members, citizen at-large members in the in the crowd. If there's no questions or comments uh to be given, uh it will be open to uh everybody. But the ask is that it's questions specific to the report therein. And that goes same online. If there are any questions about the report that was presented this evening, please let us know. Seeing no additional questions of either Mr. Flynn or Mr. Marinucci online or in person. Uh, I've brought back to you, was there any further discussion amongst the board?
Let's call it comment, it's none.
Any further discussion for the the good of the order? Saying I'm not to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Or the
I'm not ready.
This was the public. That's what I was
Referring to you.
Well, I I I, let me reiterate for clarification purposes. We're all men, well, most of us are citizens of the township, obviously, but most of the crowd is actually affiliated with the department. So clarification is I see three members of at-large citizen. So I I guess I get, I let them cut to the front of the line, but this is the opportunity for public comment.
But they can talk about anything.
If you had, at which point you can talk about anything. I just said with comments or questions directly to the report in that regard. Otherwise, it's public comment. So yes. Apologize for the confusion. I'm glad I was able to clear that up.
I know I couldn't.
So this is the opportunity for public comment. This is right.
Chad Ash, first of all, absolutely disrespectful on all of our time to change the order of this meeting today. Absolutely respect, we disrespect to everybody. I don't really want an attorney's time.
Excuse me.
I can talk the way I want.
No, actually, you will not swear.
I will. So um second, what I am hearing from the report is the community has to decide what we want for this township. It's not the fire department. It's not the board. It's us that vote whether we wanna millage or don't wanna millage. It's us that are coming in here, paying our taxes this month of how much we wanna pay. It's not the board. It's not the fire department. This is Alpena Charter Township Township Charter Township of Alpena, period.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Ash.
So I apologize for that, but we, I did get a chance to get the report when the clerk sent it out on the agenda. That was the first opportunity that the fire department had to review the report. And we had a list of uh some questions for the consultants. And I would provide a copy to each one of the board members and each of the consultants that I'm not expecting an answer tonight. But it's this clarification on some things that on our observations of their report. So if you don't mind.
And if they have, if they have the time, I guess that would be up to them, but it seems like it's a a multi-page list, so.
Yeah, and and so
Well, these would have been nice to have ahead of time. This would have been nice to have ahead of time, so they could have possibly answered these tonight.
We we just got the report, so.
Well, I don't want out Friday.
Yeah. So I guess I'd leave that to both uh Mr. Flynn and Mr. Marinucci to um look at that list and and respond appropriately uh as time permits. Um, obviously, uh you have a fairly comprehensive list. Uh, and so we'll
These aren't my questions either.
No. So we'll allow them time to actually digest several pages of clarification and comments and concerns. Appreciate. Is there any other public comment? Given the fact that it looks like a concerted group effort was made to put forward all these rebuttals of information? Um, are there any other public comments?
Mark Johnson, I had had one question. Um, early in the report, you spoke of agencies or benchmarks, their standards organizations which we should compare ourselves or could compare ourselves. Uh, you mentioned NFPA, OSHA and ISO. And you talked several occasions about the OSHA And you talked several occasions about the OSHA requirements and you referenced NFPA law, but I didn't see any further mention of the ISO in our community rating. You have any professional opinion on that issue?
So a- all of these are uh when we're referring to those, oh, every, almost every, even the NFPA standards, uh reference, uh and and an acknowledgement that all communities are not able to achieve that. So, you know, we are, I guess to your point, probably light on saying, here is exactly what you need to do. Acknowledging that also a big part of this report is that there are resources needed to achieve these. So saying do all of these things when we're saying that this is something you need to address first, which is have resources to do all of this. Seems like we're just putting a lot of things in recommendations that until you can do this, these other things really are not uh achievable. So uh I am not an ISO expert, which is the insurance services organization's office. Um, but I'm familiar with it and uh, you know, I don't have without a specific question, just what is the influence? Uh, that's a much more complex answer to to get into and probably better with an ISO uh representative than a consultant.
Yeah, and I I actually had a preliminary discussion with the ISO and principally the best way to improve our our current rating is with water ex- infrastructure expansion. Um, that is, I mean, when we look at existing infrastructure outside of just water infrastructure, it is placement of our stations, both our our north and south station are inadequately placed. Our north station should be further north, our south station should be further south. Um, but the the biggest driver when it comes to ISO ratings is actually the infrastructure and that being water mains, hydrants, et cetera. Are there any other comments? Questions of our consultants? Yes, sir.
Tim Stackloitz, uh, good evening, gentlemen, thanks for coming up. Um, in a recent study that you did for Groveland Township, um, you made the comment staffing two stations minimizes travel distance and allows resources to get to emergencies when the outcome can be affected. But in our report, you recommended putting both people at one station and closing the other station, I guess. It it seems contradictory. Okay, that I wasn't aware of that, but so thank you for that clarification, but but wouldn't closing one station here, even though we only have one person, still allow us to get resources to a an emergency quicker than if we put two at one station and had to travel to the other end of the township for that emergency?
On the first page, it says, page five, I'm not sure, Mark, it says tax increase. Members of the department vigorously campaigned for a recent millage attempt, as well as two current board members who actively campaigned against the millage. As well as the township instituting a six mil levy for water and sewer. What is this six mil? Are you talking about like water rates?
So, and then another point of clarification there is, uh, we're talking about general fund public safety, which is tax-derived aspects, the water fund is an enterprise fund, and so there's no correlation.
Well, that was an opinion, I'm sure, that decided that we think that it might hurt efforts during the time of the campaign for the uh election for a fire millage to have an increase on the water bill. We heard a lot of that while we were up campaigning. Uh, sorry.
So anyways, we're not going to go down that path.
No.
But that is the clarification between a general fund, which is tax-derived fund, and that includes.
Yeah, so there's no mills with the water fund.
So, are is there any other public comment? Or questions for the report?
Down to my level, um, Beverly Bates. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for your time and your dedication to the fire service and the synopsis that you gave. It was I I really appreciated your time. You've got some really good ideas that I think probably will not be too difficult to manage. I did want to get a clarification because you were saying about the um peak times and then you were saying about career and then have paid-on calls. That would also, so that would be in addition to the career person already on staff and then we would have a second individual a paid-on call there with them. Is that, okay, that's what I was, that's. Yeah, yeah, I mean, but right now it's all options, but, okay, I just wanted to clarify. I think that's really actually very, very good. Um, coming from one of the newer newbies on the department, the way that you get that experience is with somebody who's already had. So, um, the other things, some of the things, uh, I want to point out real quick, Laura. I would not have a problem coming and talking to you at one moment if I ever had. I don't think that that everyone feels that same way about everyone on the board, especially when sometimes we get confusing messages. Don't talk directly to the board, only go through the chief. No, it's okay to talk to you. Also, it it it, again, it's communication that boils down to, we don't know which way to turn sometimes. So just to kind of address that. Um, which also leads to the consistency, which I have gathered from this report also, that consistency is something that we all are devoid of, all, every single person that is involved in this. Um, I will be most particularly happy with an up-to-date SOP and SOGs. Because currently, right now, I function without job description and without adequate SOPs and SOGs. But I still try, even though it's extremely confusing. Um, it is my understanding that the board has to approve the policies and procedures, that there is a policy and procedure committee that things have to go through. So I think that rests.
There's some commis- communication there.
So policies are not approved by the board.
Policies are, but SOPs and SOGs work in the hands of the chief. He did not have to bring those to the board.
Okay, Nathan signed off on, so I guess that's, that that is what I would assume.
But any updates to them did not have to be brought to the board.
And that's another thing we didn't know, that could be brought.
Been communicated to people that didn't get communicated down to your level.
As you have, how you pointed out, communication is terrible, terrible here.
We agree with that a hundred percent.
And I hope that somewhere along the lines, we can figure out how to manage together better communication.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Yvonne Johnson, and again, gentlemen, I'd like to thank you for the time and the effort that went into the report and you sharing and summarizing that with us. Um, one of the things I would like to see as a taxpayer is um, I I think the in the recommendation about paid-on-call staff and the requirement of twenty-four-hour shift or twenty-four hours of shift time uh during a month, I think that that could be um very beneficial to the department, to the community. Um, I'd like to see information about what that would cost. And also about what that might do as far as uh retention. Um, and yes, it's important for folks to have the skills and to be actively involved with the department. But also too, might that be a requirement that's not necessarily realistic for the folks who are volunteers? Um, so that would be just an area that I, as a taxpayer, would really like to see more information about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, uh, further discussion for the good of the order?
Um, so I just like to kind of one more time. So, I mean, obviously, trust is a huge issue issue and it creates a lot more problems. Um, and I, you know, I think we all share in that. And I think there's a lot in this report to digest, um, and some changes that we need to make as an organization um, as leaders and in our fire department. Um, so I would hope after two today's meeting, there's more communication and and there has to be an olive branch thrown out there. We have to come together as leaders at this table and as a fire department. So I I hope that we're going to have some type of communication in some format going forward, uh, because we can't let the issue die at this table tonight. So whatever that takes, that's another meeting between some of the board members and some of the fire department members. Or whatever form that takes, we have to do that. Um, I think I just think it's crucial uh for us to survive as an organization. So thank you for what it is.
And to piggyback on that, I think it's a great idea, but I would firmly state that it would have to be done respectively. No yelling, no finger pointing, no nothing, just talking, discussing.
Well, and that goes back to the point, like, we have to leave the past unpassed and that's going to be hard for people to do, but we've all talked about it even at this board and I think amongst fire department members, we can't do things the way we've always done. Um, you can't bang your head against the wall and expect a different outcome. It's going to be the same. So as much as we want to look at this and pick it apart, there's, there's a lot of things that make sense that we need to change. Um, because we're not doing a service to our community. Uh, we can do better.
Any other discussion?
I'll piggyback, I'm piggyback.
So, so there are very effective ways to do what you just asked. And it doesn't mean we sit here and they sit there. It means we sit amongst one another at small tables. Uh, and and at those small tables, we try to establish what is most important to that table. And then each table decides what's most important to them. And then you have a facilitator write them on the wall. Or a, you know, a slip of paper and and then you will find pretty much what you just found out is that there's a common thread that goes through all of them. And then at that particular point in time, you now have a tool. You now have a small roadmap that which you can follow, that each table understands that what was important to table A was more than likely important to table B and C and D and E. And then you have, and you have the beginning of a of an of a need, not so much a want. And so you can facilitate those pretty easily. Uh, and there are people that in this community that can do that. It's an interesting way to start.
Piggyback to the piggyback.
Yeah, my comment is just that it's the culture and in the township and I think it's throughout both sides of the township, this table is new ideas, instead of embracing them and trying to run with them and grow with them and make them bigger and better, we have this yeah, but attitude. And then we go along the line and name every reason why that new idea is not going to work. Instead of trying to figure out how to make that idea better, we sorry, go on both sides do that. We have to be more open to new ideas.
Any further discussion for the good of the.
Are you going to piggyback?
You know, from the beginning, it's it's always been the bottom line for me has been how, how we have to serve the taxpayers with the money they give us and the money we ask for. And 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 it's all always been about funding this department to the level to make it the best it can be. And and uh, so or at least to provide the best service to the citizens, let me put it that way. So I believe we failed it. But, you know, so they, so the citizens, because they've told us they don't want to pay anymore. For what, what we have. So we're in a rock and a hard place situation with with this whole thing. But yes, we can, we can work around that with some fresh ideas.
Yeah, I I disagree that the citizens have said they don't want to pay anymore. I think all those millages showed is that the citizens weren't willing to pay three mils. Doesn't mean they won't pay one and a half or two or a half. All that tells me is they did not want to pay three mils at that time. So I can't, in my mind, it does not tell me that citizens don't want to pay any more money.
Well, I think.
So I think if we would go for a lower mileage.
Was actually figure out which direction we're pointed, utilizing outside influence and internal discussion. And say, this is our plan before we go back to the coffers and say, this is our plan, this is.
This is what you will get for this money. Where I think what we put it out there and really didn't say what you were going to get.
Hopefully, the tax base will catch up by the by the new properties we have.
Well, that will make a difference.
The tax base, but whether it ever catch up to the inflationary.
So seeing no further discussion, uh, to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved and supported.
Okay, so who made the motion?
I made it the first time before we.
Okay, okay, we'll give it to you, support by law.
So.
What'd you say, we're not done?
Done, we haven't adjourned yet, but.
Yeah, no, we actually have a process. Um, so we have a motion and support on the table. Any further discussion? All all those in favor of a journey signify by saying.